Good evening, everyone. Calling to order the Borough of Saraville Planning Board meeting. Will you please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay. Beth, has this meeting been advertised in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act?
Yes, Chairman, it has.
Roll call, please, Beth.
Mr. Allegra, Mr. Blamar, Mr. Bolton, Mr. Buchanan,
Here.
Councilman O'Noha, Ms. Palowski, Mr. Spazato, Chairman Muller, Mr. Cornell, Mr. Fowler,
Here.
Mr. Barlow, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Beth. Any resolutions for memorialization?
None this evening.
Any minutes?
None this evening.
Okay, communication agenda?
Again, done this evening.
Site plan subdivisions?
We have one, Saraville Seaport Associates Urban Renewal LP amended preliminary and final major site plan. Block 256.01, Lot 24, block 257.02, Lot 105.
Good evening, Ms. Smith. You can proceed with your application.
Thank you. My name for the record is Jennifer Phillips-Smith. I'm an attorney with Gibbons PC, and I am here today on behalf of Saraville Seaport Associates Urban Renewal LP, which I will call SSA for short. As you all know, SSA is the designated master redeveloper for parcel C within the waterfront redevelopment area. We have been before you several times before, and as you may recall, back in 2019, we applied for preliminary and final major site plan approval and subdivision approval for the first 15 buildings in what will be known as the Riverton Project. You granted approval for those 15 buildings by way of a resolution in January 2020. This evening, we are here for what's called the Gateway Services section. We were here earlier this year on two applications for Bass Pro, and you'll hear a little bit about the progress there at the start when I call up Mr. Feta. But tonight, we're here for Gateway Services. Back in 2020, you granted site plan approval for six buildings that were part of the Gateway Services area. This evening, we're here with six buildings. You'll see they've been slightly reconfigured, and one of the buildings that was part of the six-on-one lot is now shifted to the adjacent lot. But it's still six buildings. It's still buildings that are all focused on being close to the Main Street Extension and Peter Fisher. Buildings that were previously approved for things like a convenience store with fueling and drive-through restaurants and drive-through retail. Two of the buildings that were previously approved are now being identified for specific end users. One is a convenience store with fueling in the same location previously approved, and the other is a restaurant with drive-through, which is being proposed for a location that was previously approved for a pharmacy with drive-through. We have three main witnesses this evening. You'll hear from Mr. Feta, who's with our project team, from Dan Bush, from Colliers, our project engineer, and from David Floyd, who is our landscape architect. We have additional potential witnesses that are here this evening who can be called up to answer any specific questions, but we're going to try and be very efficient with your time this evening as these six buildings were all previously approved. So we'll be focusing mainly on what's changed.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. You can proceed.
Thank you. We did provide our affidavit of notice to the Board Secretary in advance of the hearing. With that, I'd like to call up Mr. Feta.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, sir. If you could state your names, spell your last name, and give us your professional address, please.
My name is Mark Feta. Last name is spelled F-E-T-A-H. I'm a Senior Vice President with North American Properties, responsible on this project for the development, engineering, architecture, design, construction. And so that involves the quality, the safety of the project, budget, and schedule adherence.
And your address?
My address is 17... Oh, the office address?
Yeah, your professional address.
Okay, okay. 1,000 Chevalier Boulevard, Saraville, New Jersey. They're 12 hours a day. You can find me there almost any time.
Mr. Feta, here's a fact witness this evening.
May proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Feta, before we talk about the Gateway Services area and what we're proposing for changes, can you talk a little bit about the status of the Bass Pro site and things on site, just to give the Board a general update?
Sure. Yeah, thank you for that, Jen. We'll keep it brief. Just suffice it to say, you know, we're here not for practice. These sessions, we appreciate your time. The last time we appeared here was for Bass Pro. And subsequent to that approval, once that site plan was approved, that enabled us to move forward with many other factors of the project that we described at that time. And in fact, we have moved forward with those other functions to get to a point where we can go vertical with the building. Just a few examples, we now have in our possession the building permit for the foundations for the Bass Pro building. We have a preliminary set of the full architectural and engineering plans that has been submitted to the Building Department just last week. We'll be making our official submission for that full building permit in about two weeks. I'll just pause here and maybe remind the Board that as the redeveloper in this particular relationship with Bass Pro, we will be constructing the core and shell of their building, whereas the tenant will be building the interiors of the store. So with that said, just, we just closed up our payment application for the month of September. We put $3.25 million of work in place in the month of September, a little bit more in the just past month in October, and these are all infrastructure, utilities, and site work and grading to facilitate the Bass Pro building under the 2019 site plan approval, and some of the improvements that we put in last month and this month just passed are for the site plan approval for the Gateway Services District. So again, we're very active. We're very serious about breaking ground and going vertically as soon as possible. So that's really it that I had. I could go on and on with all the construction and all the engineering work that we're doing, to the extent that there's any questions now or afterwards on progress and our commitment to make this project happen. Be happy to answer those questions. Otherwise, move right into testimony.
Sure. So, Mr. Feta, if you want to go to the exhibits, just quickly and orient the Board to where Gateway Services are located.
Sure.
With a site this big, we tend to use shorthand, so we're going to explain what we mean by that. We're going to mark this as Exhibit A1. This is our Phase 1 overview.
So this is the subject matter for this evening, this area that we call the Gateway Services District, right next to the MCUA property, main entrance, two main entrances to the project, Peter Fisher Boulevard, in this case.
Then if you could also point out Bass Pro, just for context.
Certainly. Yeah, this is the Bass Pro building, approximately 200,000 square feet. And I think I neglected to mention that as our role as the redeveloper, we will be constructing all of the utilities and site work associated with that building.
Okay, so with that context then, I'm going to shift to Mr. Bush. Are there any questions for the Board for Mr. Feta?
Mr. Feta, on the map, where's the, is the church located there, the existing?
Yes, this is the Epic Church. I would mention, while we're at it, that in last month's pay application and our progress, we've constructed some of the improvements, a good portion of the improvements that are associated with the church that we performed for their benefit, that's affiliated or associated with enables, in other words, the widening of Chevalier Boulevard.
Back in your 2020 approval, there was a condition of approval that we had to seek approval from the zoning board to make changes to the Epic Church site to allow for the widening of the existing roadway there.
Thank you.
Does any members of the Board have any questions for Mr. Feta? None? Thank you.
Thank you. So we'd like to move on to Mr. Dan Bush, who is our civil engineer for the project.
Sure. Dan Bush, B-U-S-C-H. I'm a discipline geographic, discipline leader with Colliers Engineering in Holmdow, New Jersey. I'm a licensed professional engineer. These plants have been prepared under my supervision and working on this project for a number of years. Yes, I do.
Before we move on, Mr. Bush has been accepted as an expert in civil engineering by you before.
Yes, I think, Mr. Bush, we remember you, I think, two months ago, so you may proceed. We accept your qualifications.
Thank you. Mr. Bush, if you could just start by talking a little bit about what was previously approved before we transitioned to what's being proposed this evening.
Sure. So what I have up on the, on the board here is the 2019 approval, and this is just the Gateway Services portion of that approval. In that approval, we had a convenience store with gas at the corner of Main Street Extension and Peter Fisher. We had a pharmacy in the southeast corner. We had a restaurant with drive-through, well, we had two restaurants with drive-through that fronted on Peter Fisher. And then towards the rear, we had a retail-only building and a bank building at, at the rear. You can kind of just see circulation-wise, there is this kind of, I would call awkward jog in the, in this main drive aisle that runs east and west. These two access points, this is signalized, this is right in, right out, and then you had the access on Main Street Extension.
Mr. Bush, we're going to mark that as A2, the 2019 Saraville Planning Board Site Plan Approval Plan.
Unless there's questions on that, I'm going to move to tonight's application.
While we're doing that, we'll mark that as A3, the 2023 SSA Proposed Site Plan Modification.
Okay, so most significantly, when you look at this plan, the obvious change is this center drive aisle that now runs straight from Main Street Extension through Gateway Services, and then will access what will be future retail that'll be further to the west. For just orientation purposes, we have Lot 1.05 is to the west and Lot 24 is to the right. I'm just going to refer to them as east and west, quite frankly, from my own sanity. So on the east lot, we have, we have five buildings. So we have a quick check here in the, at the intersection of Peter Fisher, Main Street Extension. So basically, the same use that was on the 2019 plan that was approved in that location. What we then, just to the south, we have a Chick-fil-A restaurant with drive-through to the south. That is previously where we had a pharmacy proposed along the MCUA, where we had two buildings previously, one being a bank. We still retained a bank. And then the two uses, the two buildings on Peter Fisher, that area was expanded. So we've actually added about 2,500 square feet of additional building along Peter Fisher, which is more valuable, more appealing to tenants. So we've increased the tenant viability here by making these buildings larger and pushing this, this area to provide more parking. And then we have another restaurant with drive-through on the, what I'm calling, the west lot. The pedestrian circulation-wise, there's a couple, couple of changes. One, we've now added direct connectivity from the public sidewalk on the south side of Peter Fisher into the Quick Check. And then there is sidewalk, again, from Peter Fisher running on the west side of the, what I'll call the east drive aisle that runs on the west side and then provides direct access to Chick-fil-A. There's two changes with respect to sidewalks that are, I'll call it, not on the site, so to speak. Previously, we had shown sidewalk on Main Street Extension. That doesn't go anywhere, as we made the decision to take that off because it, rather than have sidewalk there, we can actually put green space out there. And then same thing on the north side of Peter Fisher. There was previously sidewalk, what I'll call sidewalk to nowhere on the north side of Peter Fisher. We've taken that out. We have, now have landscaping in there. We've retained, retained the pedestrian connectivity. Unfortunately, the, this Board didn't see the Epic Church site plan, which was approved by the zoning board, but as part of that approval, there was a sidewalk included to connect to Peter Fisher on the northeast corner of this, this signalized intersection. And then that has a crosswalk that leads to the south side of Peter Fisher, and from there, you can get to any of the, any of the, any of the buildings here. Only other thing I just wanted to touch on was specifically with respect to loading. Quick Check has, because it is a 24-hour operation, needs to have dedicated loading spaces. So for the store, there's a loading space at the rear. That's 15 by about, it's over 100. And at adjacent to the fuel canopy, adjacent to the fuel tanks, there's another loading area, which is in excess of 100 feet long by about 14 and a half feet wide. So those deliveries can occur without interrupting the operations of the, of the store. Chick-fil-A does not have a dedicated loading space, and that's, that is by design because they do their, they do their deliveries at night when the store is closed. And we envision, although we do not have specific tenants for the other four buildings, we envision that to be the same process that those tenants would utilize at those locations. That's a kind of a very quick summary of the changes we've made. I don't know if you had any specific questions on any of that.
I would like to turn to, we did receive a letter from CME dated November 1st that we have reviewed.
Jen, just one, I forgot to cover one. The, as we did discuss this as part of the Bass Pro application, I want to make sure I touched on it. For EV purposes, we're, we're going to comply with the EV requirements, and we're going to do that on, on a lot-by-lot basis. So for, for example, the east lot, which is Lot 24, we will provide the requisite number of EV-ready spaces. And then correspondingly on Lot 1.05, we will do the same thing. So just, I just wanted to get that on the record. Sorry.
Sure. And the exact locations can be provided as part of resolution compliance, correct? All right. Turning to the CME later, letter, there weren't many questions in here, and I will say that the questions regarding landscaping, we are going to have our landscape architect address. Previously, we were granted approval for having sidewalk less than five feet from a given building. We're continuing that condition here, correct? And as far as the signage here, that signage meets the requirements of the redevelopment plan, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Well, then I'm next going to turn to the letter from Mr. Fowler dated October 27th.
Yep.
So in that letter, there were a number of general comments, and I'm going to ask for a few of them where we were asked to provide additional testimony. Just turning to the first general comment, this is in Section E1. "We are seeking this evening preliminary and final major site plan approval." There was a suggestion by the planner that perhaps there should be a condition with respect to the buildings other than the convenience store with fuel and, and other than the Chick-fil-A building, so the other four buildings, that we'd be required to provide the Board with specific plans once those end users have been identified, correct?
For the buildings.
For the buildings, yes. And to be clear, we are seeking site plan approval for the entire site because we anticipate that the internal roadways are all going to be constructed at one.
Yeah, just, just to explain a little bit further is, is we need to be able to construct, basically, I'll call it the internal roads, so the roads that are not on Peter Fisher, as well as be able to come in here and construct these parking lots without necessarily having the defined tenant already signed up. That's, so we need the full approval for the entirety of, of what you see up on the board.
Beyond the internal roadways and the parking, that's what you need to be able to construct now, correct?
That is correct.
And the two buildings up front, the Quick Check building and the Chick-fil-A building.
But as to the other four buildings, there may be issues as to signage or landscaping that I could envision. And I think that's what Mr. Fowler wants to protect against is this approval to the extreme in building something that perhaps was not envisioned in the 2019 approval or this amended.
Correct. So I, I guess my thinking wasn't, the attorneys would know better than I, but that if you had preliminary approval for the entirety of the project, then you could do your curbs and your roadways and your sidewalks and whatnot. You just couldn't pull, pull a building permit for any of those other four buildings. And then if you got preliminary and final on the front two buildings, you could get your permits and do everything you needed to do. Or if it, as a condition of approval, that you agreed to come back when you have tenants for those other four sites to see how that's matching up to what you're showing today. I would imagine a footprint of the building is going to change slightly. Drive-through might change. Something's going to change. It's not going to be exactly as we see it today. Slim chance. So that was up to, my suggestion was to give you preliminary final for everything. Just leave it at that. Didn't seem to be correct, those four buildings, where you don't know who the tenants are going to be and how it's all going to.
Because we have preliminary and final from the 2020 approval, we would request that we have preliminary and final here. Otherwise, it will be sort of confusing that we have preliminary and final for an old plan, but only preliminary for a new. We'd request preliminary and final, but we would agree to a condition for the four buildings that we could not start building construction until we had submitted, come back to the Board and submitted plans for those particular buildings.
That's fine.
We just want some control, since, as we've seen over the last four years, you know, we don't need a pharmacy, understandable.
Right.
Which may slightly alter things, and I don't think the Board is going to push back, but I think the Board wants to know what's going on and when. So I don't have a problem doing that as a condition that can build all the infrastructure. Just if things change, you know, we come back as to those.
I think that's, that's agreeable.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay. Just going through some of the other specific questions. I think we've already addressed number two and several of the others. Skipping down to number six, there's a recommendation that a parking stall in the northwest corner of the Chick-fil-A parking lot be eliminated. Can you point out which parking spot you believe that is?
So it's to the north of this red car on the exhibit.
And would you be agreeable to remove that space?
Yeah, so there's, there's two, let's just, there's two comments in, in, related to the same number comment. So one is requesting removal of this stall to the, we'll call it northwest corner, and another stall to the southeast corner. Were agreeable to remove this stall with respect to the stall that's in the southeast corner closer, close to the building, right up against it. We can make it, we can make a slight adjustment with the, that bay of parking to pull it away from the stalls that are right in front of the, of the store itself and retain that stall.
So you would propose to keep the one on the southeast corner?
Correct.
But to make modifications to address the turning radius issue that was raised in the planner's letter?
Correct.
Mike, does that work? I'm sorry. About how far away would you be pulling it? Because the concern was that if you're backing out of that space, that you're going to be right behind that row of spaces that are perpendicular to the building, you know, where anybody moves back a foot in their car to back out without seeing you, they're hitting your car. Or if there was a large van, like parking in the handicap spot that was there, it may be out so far that the guy in that parking space in the, the southeast corner can't get out of the spot. So you're going to move it about how far?
First, I don't agree that it's a, it's an unsafe parking space. Having said that, we have room, we have room to slide it over a couple of feet. It's going to be, say, three feet, and it'll, it'll, it'll improve it, but it is not an unsafe space the way it's laid out right now.
Unsafe in that some, if you're backing, the way it is right now, if you're backing out, those cars that, the rear of those cars are going to be so close to your car backing out, you can't do anything other than go straight back. They'll back, likely back into you, good chance. Or, like I said, in the handicap spot, a large vehicle that was there might, may block that vehicle in. So if you can move it a few feet away, that would be fine.
It's not an unsafe space. I'm just going to leave it at that. They don't have to back straight up. They can turn, right? Just like anybody else in any other space.
Because the curb, I'm not sure how well they turn, but, and they, if they spin out to the left, then where do they go?
They can back up, just like any of these other spaces.
Okay.
Just all clear, so. Six A, we'll say.
Correct.
So six A, we're going to eliminate the northwest stall.
Correct.
The southeast stall, we're going to move two feet off.
That's correct.
Yes.
I'll move then to number seven. There's a question about whether the ADA space.
Some of those grades in that area do need to be adjusted to make that compliant, so we will make those adjustments.
So we'll comply by making adjustments. All right. Number eight. The question has to do with pedestrian safety along the sidewalk on the west side of the Chick-fil-A building.
Right, so we have about seven, eight feet foot-wide sidewalk there. It's certainly adequate to provide for vehicle overhang and have, you know, pedestrians be able to cross in front of those vehicles.
The dash line that was coming out from the Chick-fil-A, is that a roof overhang? That's not something where there's a bump out in the building itself.
I, I would, I would have to have the architects describe what any of those features are, so I don't, I don't want to mislead you to say something that it's not.
But the seven or eight feet is from the, from the building face?
Yeah, yes. Yes.
Okay. I, oh, I'm sorry.
I was right. What did we talk about, seven?
Seven, we will comply by making changes to the grades to make sure that the ADA space does comply. I think it's just that it's the stall near the flagpole.
That's just a good reference as to where it is. Yeah, 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 yep.
So we'll comply by adjusting the grades so that it complies with code. Number eight, we are indicating we believe it is an acceptable condition with a 70-foot wide sidewalk. Number nine. This has to do with a railing that encloses the outdoor area around the Chick-fil-A. And I believe that the applicant is indicated they'll comply by putting pillars in, although perhaps not of stone, but of another durable decorative material to match the building, if that's acceptable.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and just with respect to number 10 about the, it's about the dual drive-through. It's, it needs to be, for operational purposes, it needs to be a dual drive-through from start to finish. The, the comments with, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, is about the exit to the, to the dual drive-through.
Correct. So they may, sure. When there's two cars side by side, like come out, they both want to go in the same direction. How do they do that? Because we can't, one, one car is facing unkind traffic. There's no way of bringing that down to a single lane when you exit?
No, for operational purposes, they need it to function this way. And this is how they're building their stores now, for that matter. This is, this is not a new thing, for, for lack of a better word.
All right. So then we go to number 11. Mr. Bush, you already testified that we would identify the location of EV parking stalls as a, as a condition of approval should the Board choose to approve. Number 12, there's a recommendation that there be at least one EV charging in the pump area, but as proposed, the EV charging would be located in parking stalls.
That's correct.
And not in the pump, gas pump area.
I was just asking that you do the dry lay, the piping, whatever, so that if you did decide in the future, if five years from now, 10 years from now, the gas pumps aren't being used as they are today, that you could convert that to a EV charger. Doesn't mean it's going to be an EV charging today, just that you would have the underground infrastructure there, so you could do it.
I think I'll finish Mr. Bush's testimony, and then we can call a representative from Quick Check to maybe address that more specifically. There's, in number 13, there's a request for 15 parking stalls at the rear of Quick Check to be restriped for larger vehicle parking. Can you identify where those are, Mr. Bush?
I believe that these stalls directly at the rear of the store.
And the applicant is a, is agreeable to do that, correct? To make them larger stalls?
I'll be honest with you, I haven't spoken to the Quick Check folks.
And I'll ask Mr. Lamont when I call him up. All right. So I think that that covers just about everything that's in the letter, because we already talked about number 16. Number 17, I know I put this on the record every time, has to do with affordable housing fees. The applicant is already subject to a redevelopment agreement and a specific agreement that was approved as part of the Borough's affordable housing settlement with the court that already specifies what fees are to be paid, how they're paid, how they're collected, and will abide by those agreements. So in 14, we'll, we'll comply with putting in stop bars and.
We, we believe we do comply, so if I, if there's certain locations that we need to identify, but I believe we have stopped, I mean, you can, it's hard to see. If there's certain locations that we need to identify, but I believe we have stopped, I mean, you can, it's hard to see on the exhibit, but they're located throughout. Is there certain locations?
When I looked at the plan, I saw a couple of places appeared they were missing when we go with the residential compliance, we can cover that.
That's fine. Thank you.
And we agree that we are bound by prior planning board approvals and outside agency approvals. That is Mr. Fowler's letter. There are a few items in here I skipped over that had to do with landscaping, I'm going to ask Mr. Floyd to address those. Unless, um, Mr. Bush, there's anything else that I neglected to ask you.
No, thank you.
Uh, any, any questions for Mr. Bush?
Mr. Chairman, when I'm in our report talk.
Sure, sure, yes, um, on the 2019 approval. The only thing that was on lot 1.05 was this parking lot across from the, from the cinema. And it's a 219, I think acre lot. So it's basically what I call the lands remaining, for lack of a better word. The, the building that we're now included with tonight's application is this shaded out building, which was, it's immediately to the west of. Um, lot 24, which was part of the approval, um, from 2019. So it's still. The circulation will not look as it does on, this is a, this is A1. The circulation will run straight through to allow connectivity between the, the building that we're now proposing on 1.05 to this retail strip that's also going to be on 1.5. Or 1.05, excuse me.
Does anyone else on the board have any questions for Mr. Bush? No, okay, thank you, Ms. Smith, thank you, Mr. Bush.
Thank you.
All right, for my third witness this evening, we have our, our landscape architect. Hope for that one's working. And I'd ask that you be sworn in, and then I'll ask you for your credentials.
My name is David Floyd, F L O Y D. Professional address is 3715 North Side Parkway. Suite 720, Atlanta, Georgia, 30327.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd. For the record, can you summarize your education background and licensure?
I can, I'm a graduate of Clinton University and the University of Georgia. I have a professional degree in landscape architecture in the state of New Jersey, as well as many other states across the United States. I am a founding partner of Site Solutions back in, uh, 2000.
But, so Mr. Floyd, we're going to be offering you this evening as an expert in the fields of landscape architecture.
Any questions for Mr. Floyd about his qualifications?
Nope.
Being no issues, we accept his qualifications as a landscape architect.
Thank you very much.
Georgia, thank you for coming up.
Go dogs.
Mr. Floyd, if you want to begin, if you want to use the exhibits, the last one was A3, which is the 2023 approval, or 2023 proposal, I should say. Hit the, that one, perfect. If you would summarize the proposed landscaping for us.
Uh, there, there are really no major material differences, uh, in the landscape plan. Um, it's very similar to the 219 supplemental. Um, we meet, actually we exceed the minimum 10% landscape, uh, requirement. We still have the double row of trees along Peter Fisher. Um, we've added, actually added some screening along, uh, Main Street to make sure we screen the surface parking. That front Peter Fisher. We, just as we did in 219, we have, we vetted this, all the materials selected by the local, uh, uh, nurseryman in terms of their. Uh, availability and there's just, um, um, being proper for this site and the conditions that we have here in New Jersey.
And the dou, the double row of trees is being proposed on the internal Peter Fisher Boulevard, correct?
That's correct.
And the prior approval from 2019, uh, did not have the double row of trees along Main Street Extension, correct?
That's correct.
So I think I've just covered the items that were in Mr. Fowler's report, there were questions about the landscaping. The only other one I'll add is, we've already, um, indicated the outdoor seating area around Chick-fil-A. And I believe Quick Check is slated to have some outdoor seating around theirs as well, correct?
They've indicated that they will have some outdoor seating there, but when they, um, these tenants submit their building plans, of course, the FFNE and the. The exact layout of those, uh, seating areas will be shown in those drawings.
Great. So those are all the questions I have for Mr. Floyd, based on the questions that were asked in the, the comment letters.
Anyone on the board have any questions?
Just a comment, um, I serve on our environmental commission here in town as well. Um, it is nice to see applicants come to us, uh, not just meeting requirements, but exceeding requirements, and I wish more of our applicants would do that. So thank you to the, to those that put that together, it's going to be nice to see something living and breathing in that space, so, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, did it address all the issues in your report regarding the, um, street trees and Main Street extension? I think I just asked for planting some street trees along Main Street Extension, that's something you could add a few. Right now, there's no street trees, I believe.
Yes, and I think that was intentional, uh, along Main Street Extension, if, if maybe you want to describe, um, some of the other low-lying landscaping that's in that area. I'm sorry. Along Main Street Extension, we're, we are not proposing street trees and that's intentional, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Uh, and that's concerning the visibility from there to the Main Street extent, between the buildings and Main Street Extension, correct?
This was two, um, in December of, uh, 2020, when we had this discussion, but it was determined that. We, we wanted to maintain sightline visibility to our, to our entrance, but also not create, um, sightline issues to these, to these two out parcels here. But at the same time, as I mentioned, we put heavy evergreen screen here, the screen any vehicles in the surface lots.
Okay. Okay, any more questions? Okay, Mr. Floyd, thank you very much.
I think I promised that we would ask, uh, Quick Check's representative to just address the one question about the EV area within the pump. So if I could call up Mr. Lamont.
Good evening. Good evening. Yes, my name is Richard Lamont, Director of Real Estate for Quick Check Corporation. My address is 3 Old Highway 28. White House Station, New Jersey. 08889.
Mr. Lamont, for the benefit of the board, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yes, I do.
Thank you. For the benefit of the board, if you can describe your position with Quick Check.
Yeah, as Director of Real Estate, I'm in charge of the group that finds new sites for Quick Check locations.
And you're familiar with Quick Check's general operations, correct?
Very much so, yes.
So there was a question about adding. An EV charging space within the fuel pump area, is that something that Quick Check can agree to?
No, I, I, right now, I would say we cannot agree to that. Um, we are happy to do, um, EV charging. I think we're all trying to make sense of the rule with the make-ready, um, and we're certainly intend to comply with that in any way. That we need to, uh, we are doing EV currently in eight of our locations, and in all of those, they're around the perimeter of the site. I think one of the guiding principles for doing it that way is the, the source of electric is always, is typically separate from the building itself, and it's coming from off-site. So that lends to the efficiency of having it around the perimeter. But also, the idea of combining the charging equipment with the fueling equipment under the same canopy is just something that I have personally not seen done in any of our stations. I know that our parent company, Murphy, that has over 1,600 sites, I'm positive they don't have that in any of their locations. So it's, it, it may be where we're headed someday, but I think if we were to ever determine that. EV is now going to replace fuel, that would be such a major renovation for us that. Making that area ready for that conversion would really be the least of our worries, it would be a major conversion. And believe me, as gas, as fuel providers, it's something we're watching very carefully. So it may be our future, but not near future. If we were going to make that conversion, those undo it would really frankly be the least of our worries, that would be a major renovation. And we would be working with the power company and we, you know, that would not be an obstacle to us doing it if it was. And around the perimeter, like I said, in our experience so far. In almost every case, we've had a separate power source from the building. And it has been from the perimeter somewhere. And it's, it's been, you know, it's something we understand, it's where we're headed, it's the future, we're, we're trying to accommodate it as much as we can. Um, it has been difficult. Between the power company and the EV charging providers, it's very difficult to have that coincide with the opening of a store. So we've been adamant about asking towns not to require that it be in service at the time we are allowed to open our store, because even with our best intentions. We have not been able to get the EV to coincide with the opening of our store, it's, it's, it's a very difficult process. Uh, our store in Reddington, very close to our home office, has now been open for, I don't know if it's a year, two years? Wow, time, time flies. We are only just now getting the EV that we agreed to do there up and running, and that has been a function of utility issues and things like that. So even with our best intentions, it's been difficult. So we're happy to comply. We would ask that it not be a condition to our opening, and there's, you know, but we would make a commitment to applying, complying however the board sees fit.
And they would be around the perimeter, not under the fuel canopy?
For now, we would prefer to be around the perimeter.
That's all I have from Mr. Lamont.
Okay.
Jennifer, were you going to address the issue of the, um, number 13 on Mr. Fowler's report with him?
Oh, yes, Mr. Lamont, I think he gets, are you agreeable to having the 15 spaces behind? The store be restriped for larger vehicle parking?
Yes, we're okay with that.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Lamont before he? Okay, thank you.
That was everything that I was planning to cover this evening. Like I said, what we've tried to focus on is looking at what you previously approved and pointing out where things are changing to meet with what we hope are new operators at the site. So we hope that you'll grant preliminary and final site plan this evening.
Okay, um. Is there a motion to open to the public on this application? Second, second, all favor? Aye. Okay, so anyone from the public, uh, we'll start with the folks here in chambers. Want to be heard on this application? I don't see any, any folks online, Beth, who want to be heard on this application.
Um, if anyone online would like to be heard, please raise your hand or hit star nine. Nobody.
A motion to close to the public? In favor?
Aye.
Boost.
Okay, um, Ms. Smith, did you want to, uh, make a closing statement?
No, I think, I think I've covered, uh, everything, but if you have any questions, happy to answer them, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Smith regarding the application? Michael, most of your concerns in your report have been satisfied? Jay, the concerns in your report? Okay, all right, um, I'll entertain an application, uh, to approve the application, is there a motion? Second.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Beth.
Mr. Blamar, Mr. Bolton. Mr. Buchanan.
Yes.
Ms. Palowski.
Yes.
Mr. Spazato. Chairman Mahler.
Yes, on the condition that all of the conditions that we agreed to during the hearing, um, are complied with and put, put part of the, uh, resolution, I'm a yes.
Application approved.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
I have a second, Anthony. They all said it at the same time.
Okay, um, so next on the agenda is. All right, let them clear out.
People go that were in the back. Yeah. Yeah, I just. They were.
Okay, so, that makes sense then. Exactly.
Okay, next on the agenda is all business, uh, we have the. Discussion, ongoing discussion on the Sarahville Board of Education New Bus Transportation Complex Capital Review. Uh, we heard from the Board of Ed and we heard from the public at the last meeting. Uh, I, we all agreed to, uh, defer discussion because it was pretty late at night by the time we finished, uh, hearing. From the Board of Ed and the folks. Uh, what I plan to do is we can discuss it on the record now, I generally do want to open it up to the public though initially, so they, they can be heard further on the application. Uh, it's not the application, but on, on the topic. Uh, I know we also have some folks participating online, and I want to be clear. To avoid, uh, anything that occurred at the last meeting regarding any, um, comments, um, anti-Semitic comments, inflammatory. Uh, that are unrelated to this application, they will not be tolerated. If you start doing that, we will shut you down immediately and move on to the next. If it continues to be a habitual problem, uh, we'll have to go from there, so. Uh, why don't we, I, I would like to make a, a motion to open to the public first to hear any further comments, and then we can deliberate. So is there an application, a motion to open the public? Okay, so any, uh, no objection, open the public? None, okay, so anyone here, uh, from the public in chambers who wants to be, uh, heard again on this topic? Sure, step up. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Nicholas Menanti, 101 Kendall Drive.
Thank you.
Um, I didn't speak at the last meeting. Pretty much believe that the people who were here from Laurel Park said what needed to be said at the time. Basically, my objection to this, uh, project is the location that they chose and its proximity to Laurel Park and the residential area. I'm well aware that the, uh, the Wildlife Preserve, we'll just call it that for, you know, any other purpose. Is listed as being industrial. We all know that in 2008, when, uh, the mayor accepted it, it was never re-designated as wildlife or open public space. It should have been, because that was the intent of the donation, but it still was left as industrial. So what my concern is, is, uh, to the points that was brought up by, I'm sorry, sir, I don't know your name. Mr. Was the fact that their architect who was making the presentation indicated that there was no comprehensive environmental study done. This is in an area where we just lost thousands of. This is in an area where we just lost thousands of trees to that massive complex right up the road from it. This is in an area where this was meant to be a wildlife preserve. And now we're taking seven acres and according to them, 400 more trees to be taken down. This is in an area that at one time was a toxic site. Yes, remediation did take place, but I wouldn't want to work there. But again, that's up to the board and if the mayor decides to put the DPW there, you know, again, that's up to those workers and their union to object to being there. Also, no traffic study was ever done. That's one of the primary concerns for people who live in Laurel Park. Pine Tree and Kendall Drive are used now as cut-throughs for the traffic that gets backed up over on Ernston Road. You're going to be adding, according to their estimate, anywhere from 72 to the full capacity of the, the the complex would be 85 school buses. 72 to 85, let's round it down to 80. Thrown onto Borden Town Avenue, thrown onto Ernston Road, because according to their traffic director, their bus director, their buses are not going to cut through Kendall Drive. When they get to the point of Locust Lane and they get frustrated from sitting in that traffic, from throwing all that additional, all those additional vehicles onto that area, they're going to make the right. They're going to cut down Kendall Drive just to get over there. And if they don't, the motorists will, just out of frustration from being stuck on Borden Town Avenue. Again, it's, it's a touchy situation with the traffic in Laurel Park as it is. Now you're putting 80 buses on top of that. In addition to the fact that if the, the mayor was quoted as saying that she, she's thinking about moving DPW there. Again, we're going to have those vehicles. We're going to have the workers going to work in the morning. We're going to have them coming home at night. Yes, it's an industrial area, but it's an industrial area that resides right next to a residential area. And there's a lot of people that live in Laurel Park. I guess I'm just asking if you consider having to move this to an area that's truly isolated from where people actually live. These buses come and go right now from four different locations, if I understood the superintendent correct when they were making their presentation. Now they're all going to be converging from one location, yards away from my backyard. I live on Kendall, they're going to be right there. That's not even to mention the fumes and everything else. That's my objection, you know, again, again, it's going to cause more traffic for Laurel Park and the people who live there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dan, come on up.
Evelyn Smith, 124 Kendall Drive. I was at the council meeting the other night, at which time we found out that basically, in my opinion, we have been catfished by the Board of Ed. Okay, they intentionally, don't tell me, oh, four times they were asked for the plans and four times they never got to you. Don't tell me that was not intentional, okay? Second of all, they said that the lease agreement was a done deal. It is not. It has never been signed. It can be rescinded immediately. Okay, there's, there's nothing that's, that says that they have to, to do that. And the town council does not seem to be in favor of putting it there. They were very, you know, positive about that's not a good place. It's so many vehicles in one area. Now you want to add these to them. And then it just, you know, it, it's not, it's not going to fly. As far as the zoning, Mayor Kilpatrick has tasked the attorney, okay, to work with your representative to the, to the council, yeah, to get the zoning changed. Okay, so as far as I'm concerned, this has got to be a done deal. You know, it's, it's dead because you've got, the council doesn't want to do it. At the last meeting, you guys all expressed the fact that you really didn't want to do it either, but you were stuck because they had the lease, which isn't true. They don't have the lease. So you guys can do whatever you want, okay? It just, it, it's just a really, really bad idea. It's horrendous, absolutely horrendous. And Mr. Manetti was correct in that, you know, they're going to be cutting through Laurel Park if, I mean, you know, right now, it's only because they're working on Cheesequake that it's as bad as it is. But Ernston Road is always backed up, okay? It sometimes it takes me five minutes to get out of my neighborhood onto Ernston Road. I've found other ways to, to go. I like Johnson's Lane now because that's my way of getting through around. Well, I've lived on Kendall Raceway for the last 60 years, okay? I'm well aware of it. In fact, I asked the mayor and she asked the person who's in charge of, of that if we can get one of those signs on Kendall. Because I remember as a child, if we wanted to, you know, ride our bike, we walked up the hill to about his house and then you just let go. And you just went way, right all the way down Kendall Drive. By the time you got down to the, to Cheesequake, you were probably doing faster than any of the cars had been going. And the same thing with sleigh riding. You were able to do it in the street back then, but you can't now. It's, you know, it's, it's just a really, and like I said, I, I really feel that, that we were catfished. That, you know, they kept this as secret as they possibly could until they thought that it was a done deal and they could bring it out. And there wasn't anything we could do about it. And that's not true.
I just wanted to clarify, when, there's a, there's a memorandum of agreement that was signed by both the Board of Ed and, and the council and it was approved. So I'm not, we're not weighing in on the legality and whether people can get out of that or whatnot. I'm, I'm just saying that there, there is, we didn't, we didn't say there was a lease. We said there was a memorandum of agreement on the lease, memorandum of understanding, I think.
Of understanding?
Yeah.
It's not a lease, okay?
Depending on how the court interprets it, it could certainly say that there has to be specific performance of it. Again, not something that this board can or should consider. That's between the council and the Board of Ed. And, and just to address something you said, this board can do nothing other than make a recommendation. We're not approving it. We're not denying it. This board has one role under the statute, which says anytime a public entity, whether it's the town, the Board of Ed, wants to build something, they just have to come and make a presentation. The board doesn't have to like the presentation, agree with it, disagree with it. It can just make recommendations. The recommendation could be, put it somewhere else. The recommendation could be shift how the building looks or put the driveway over here. But all they can do is make a recommendation.
Right, but under the assumption that you guys had that this was a done deal, then that would have changed, that will change the way that you, you know, approach it as far as what your comments are going to be.
No, I think this board intended to make recommendations. If the Board of Ed and the Township Council choose to go forward, it is a done deal. Nothing this board does changes that.
Right.
This board is the only one of the three boards involved that don't have a, a legal basis to do anything. So I think it is a done deal in the sense that they don't have to listen to any of the recommendations. The recommendations could have been discussed before they entered into the memorandum of understanding. And I assume there were discussions because there are things that each side was giving as part of it, so.
Man, just to, not to interject, but we, we will be issuing a recommendation to the Department of Education. We will set forth the procedural history of what occurred here. And we will issue our recommendation to the board, to the Department of Education, which was our right to do before the Department of Education approved the application.
They didn't tell you that, that they were going and getting the Department of Education to, you know, like I said, we were catfished.
There, there was apparently a mistake was made and I'm not, I'm not looking to blame anyone, but the, the plans didn't get here simultaneously with their submission to the Department of Education. So you're right, we will make a recommendation to the Department of Education. The council is free to, to see it. The Board of Ed is free to see it. We will make our recommendation pursuant to what we can recommend under the law, which is somewhat limited as, as Mr. Barlow indicated. And, and that's what, and that's what we, we plan on doing. And, and we welcome all the comments that we're hearing. We welcome the participation. We want to hear everything. And that's, that's what we're going to do.
One of the things that, that was brought up at the council meeting is the fact that, that land is compromised, we'll say. When they start moving the trees out, when they start digging foundations, all the stuff that's may have settled into the ground is going to get stirred up. And you know where it's going? Right here, okay? They, they didn't, the fact that they didn't do an environmental study on it at all is preposterous. But, you know, that's, that's something, I mean, that's could be in your recommendations that they have an environmental study done or a traffic study, you know, that kind of thing. But as far as the lease, the council's lawyer says there is no binding anything. So, thank you.
Anyone online?
Anyone online that would like to speak during this public portion, please press star nine or raise your hand.
All right, so is there a motion to close to the public? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, okay.
Okay, so I'd like to open up the floor to any discussion regarding this topic among the board members. Dan, anyone have a, anything to say? Questions?
Chairman, chairman, if I could. I, the original site was in about two blocks from my house. I would hear the buses start up. I would hear the buses back up on about 800 feet from, from the lot they were in. So I understand the residents' concerns. It's not the ideal place. I'm not quite sure where the ideal place is. I'm not sure what the council had provided and worked with the members of the board on optional places. There's a concern about cut-through for all vehicles, not just buses. I understand buses are bigger. But for most, most of the spots in our town, if they put it on the outskirts, down, down Journey Mill, there's still going to be cut-through because traffic's going to back up. I don't like the location where it's at, especially with these new warehouses that are going up or that are up. And if they're potentially filled, that's going to just create more, more traffic out there. I know that the trucks, I believe the trucks are only allowed to turn right out of their parking lot. But it's going to be difficult for the buses to get out making lefts. Another concern, and I, I don't know how major or minor it is, is that, you know, we never did receive that document that was submitted to us that was supposedly submitted months ago, that was in their application with the Department of Ed. I know that this is not an application. We're not voting on an application. We're just making recommendations. And my recommendation would to just urge them to look for other optional options than, than the one that they're looking at right now.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, because we did not receive the March 29th letter, because there was no environmental study done, because there was no traffic study done, because we asked and residents asked the superintendent and the Board of Education to comply with the statute requiring a presentation before this board and refused to appear until this last moment. Because the public discourse around the specific location was not done in a transparent way, that part of it can't be part of what we decide here. The rest of it can be. My understanding from what is on the public record is that there was going to be a lease signed. This is all in the public domain, but a member of the Borough Council asked for the lease signing to be postponed pending the Board of Education responding to a litany of questions that were asked by the council. Those answers were never provided back to the council. So it has stayed in limbo. The legality of an MOU versus a lease is for someone else who gets paid very well to sort out. That's not me. Knowing everything that I know and seeing the, the, knowing that there have also been plans presented to the Board of Education and to the superintendent for other locations, including those on Main Street Extension, I, I wholeheartedly hope that our recommendation as pertains to the specific location and how it adheres and does not adhere to our master plan that we worked hard on. My, my opinion would be to absolutely unequivocally choose another location and to have a public airing where residents can come and express their concerns and be part of that process versus a required aspect that is only considered after the fact. I think we can do better by our residents. And if we're going to make a change to the way things are done, I wish the Mayor O'Brien had rezoned. He did not. And we find ourselves in a situation where gifted land is now being used not for open spaces, but for something it was not designed to be used for. And I can't sign off on that.
Thank you, Mr. Spazata. Anyone else want to be heard on the board? I will give you my two cents on this. I, I spent a lot of time researching the procedural history of the board's application. It took me some time to figure it out. I had to navigate through a series of New Jersey statutes, case law, administrative code. I'm not going to repeat the procedural history. I put on the record at the last meeting, but it's there and I can give it to the Planning Board Council when we issue our recommendation. My understanding is that the Board of Education obtained approval for a long-range facilities plan with the Department of Education. And my reading of the statute NJSA 40,55D-31 subsection B states, "The Planning Board shall review and issue findings concerning any long-range facilities planned submitted to the Board, Board of Education pursuant to the Educational Facilities Construction and Financing Act for the purpose of review of the extent to which the long-range facilities plan is informed by and consistent with at least the land use plan element and the housing element contained within, within the municipal master plan adopted pursuant to section 19 of Public Law 1975, chapter 291, par. 40,55D-28, and any such elements of the municipal master plan as the Planning Board deems necessary to determine whether the prospective site for the school facilities contained in the long-range facilities plan promote more effective and efficient coordination of school construction with the development efforts of municipality. The Planning Board shall devote at least one full meeting of the board to presentation and review of the long-range facilities plan prior to adoption of a resolution setting forth the board's findings. From all of the materials I reviewed that were submitted by the Board of Ed and the presentation they made, I am not and the presentation they made, I am not convinced that they have satisfied, uh, the standard to this board's satisfaction based on the standards set forth in the statute that it, it is consistent with and at least consistent with at least the land use plan, uh, element, uh, the municipal master plan and other elements of the municipal master plan as the planning board deems necessary to determine whether the site, um, promotes more efficient coordination of school construction with the development efforts of, of the municipality. For all the reasons that were raised by the residents and there was no presentation by the board as to satisfaction of these elements, um, my recommendation would be, uh, not to, um, not to support the location as proposed by the Board of Ed. So unless there's any further comments, um, I'd like to conduct a vote either in favor of, um, you, either recommending to the Department of Education, um, the board maintain, the Board of Education maintain the current location, or recommending that the planning board does not, um, support the Board of Education's location of the transportation complex.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, issue a report to the Department of Education that the Saraville Planning Board does not stand in favor of the present location.
Your second? Roll call?
Mr. Blomar? Mr. Bolden?
Yes.
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 The back?
Yes.
Eric Moore?
Yes. So, um, the, the planning, the board's attorney here will, um, issue a draft recommendation for us to review and then we'll submit it to the Department of Education, consistent with what, all the board's, uh, comments and opinions on the matter and recommendations. And, uh, we'll send it off and we'll copy the council and, and the Board of Education.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask if it would be appropriate for someone from the planning board to attend our next council meeting when that, statement is, is crafted and created and ready to go to the DOE so that that can be presented directly to the council in person.
Is everyone okay with that? And it's a board decision. Any, do you want to, any objection? Nope?
Okay.
What I was just going to say, Mr. Chairman, is, um, I, I don't have it in front of me. I think it was either October seventh or October ninth when the Board of Ed first sent the notice that we received. Um, Beth asked us to hear.
Sure.
October eighth. Seventh and ninth, that's right. I, I have.
I have October tenth.
Yeah, October eighth was a Sunday.
Yeah.
It was late. I think it was same day.
Regardless, seven, eight, nine, ten. I, I have it.
Here's the entire procedural history.
Okay.
If you want. I can send it in word. Yeah, I'll send it to you in word. I'm sorry.
What I was just going to say is, I'll construct, um, a draft to be submitted to the DOE with copy to the Board of Ed and, um, the mayor and council, um, so that it will go out. But I just want to make sure, so.
Chairman?
Yes.
Like November twenty.
Well done.
Twentieth would be, so to speak, our deadline. So I'll try and circulate that draft in the next couple of days. Because I will be out of the country from the seventh to the seventh.
We, you normally have forty-five days to get it to the Department of Education before they issue their approval, but
True.
So, I, I get it. We want to, we want to comply with the time deadlines unlike other
Yep.
entities. Uh, Dan, do you have a comment, question?
Yeah, I just had a question. I know, you know, we're going out and saying no at this, you know, that we don't approve of it. Um, is there a way that we can get what the council and the Board of Education had discussed as, as alternate locations, um, any kind of, uh, meeting minutes, just when they were having these discussions, whether it be um, council meetings or subcommittee meetings and, and get the minutes and, and see exactly what was discussed so that we could maybe with, with all of our heads together, another organization getting involved with the council and the Board of Education, just looking at, for, from a planning perspective of where, where a good location would be to give an option um, with our, with our experts and so forth, rather than, um, just going out and saying no, maybe have another option down the road. Um, and get that information so we can just, uh, look at it, digest it and um, understand it. You know, I don't know if there was any kind of emails back and forth regarding it that we could look at and just, so we can have an understanding and can make a recommendation as a board.
I, I think that's a good thought. I just, I don't know if there'd be any meeting minutes, if there were any discussions with any subcommittees of the council, but I'll, I'll see if we can get any materials. I, I'd like, I mean, I would like to, um, appoint Anthony as the, i- if you would, to go to the next council meeting to represent the board, you know, along with Councilman Inoha, to present our recommendations. If, I mean, I, would everyone agree? Do you want to take a vote on it? But does anyone object to it?
I have no objection.
Okay. And then, and then Dan, we'll try to figure out, um, Jay.
As a prior.
Would not have the ability to get that material and discuss it. December sixth would be too late.
Yep.
We wouldn't be within the forty-five.
No, no, we, we're going to issue our recommendation, but I'm saying, I don't know when.
Second part of it is, I understand it. If you're talking about it, the second element is perhaps the board getting more involved in the process going forward than obviously what he's suggesting.
Take us out of our forty-five day window.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, I don't want to interfere with the forty-five day window. I, this was like a secondary
Option.
Option.
Uh, Dan, I think there was a, a March seventh meeting that we can get the video on. Is, was that the joint meeting with the Board of Ed and the council?
Mr. Chairman, on March seventh, there was a joint meeting between the mayor and council and the Board of Education. The minutes of those meet, of that meeting are available on the Board of Education website. And I think the video may even be available as well, but I know as a minimum the minutes of that discussions as to which properties were discussed and why this site was selected, that's discussed in the minutes that are available. March seven twenty-two.
See, I think part of the issue is that the Board of Ed has a certain criteria for the property they want and, uh, that, that, that limits the potential location based upon the Board of Ed's desires as to where to put this, right?
I'm sure, I can quickly summarize. Back in January of twenty-two, our office was authorized by the mayor and council to look at alternate sites for the transportation center. The criteria that we utilized was Barlow-owned property, Board of Vacation, Board of Vacation-owned property or Sera property. So those are the type of sites we've looked at. It had to be not within a residentially zoned area. It had to have a certain minimum size of five acres or greater. So that was a criteria. From that, there were eight parcels that were presented for further discussion for, to the mayor and council and to the Board of Education. That led to that joint meeting on March seventh. At the March seventh meeting, the mayor and council recommended a property on Journey Mill Road. That wasn't acceptable to the Board of Education. They wanted property on Cheesequake Road on the south side. That was not acceptable to the mayor and council. So the agreement was this particular site on the north side.
Okay.
That's a quick summary.
Thank you, Jay. So I, I, I I don't know what the status is going to be, and, and it's not our role to say that this isn't or is going to happen. Uh, I, I assume there's communications going on between council for the Board of Ed and the borough regarding the MOU. And I don't know what the status of those and we won't be privy to those. I think we should offer to the council, though, that we be willing to sit at the table with the Board of Ed and the council and have, you know, even, you know, even though there is a, a council representative for the planning board, but have another representative, and I would, I would propose Anthony to sit at the council table, uh, to sit at the, the table with all, all the other parties when the decision is made, i- if it is going to be made to find a new location. I, I don't know. We don't know the status of that. We can't control it. But I think the first step would be, and when's the next council meeting?
Thirteenth.
Okay. So we're, we're not going to have our recommendation on the thirteenth, would be?
Uh, it's going to be my hope because I don't want to get back from Belgium and have to.
Okay.
So.
Halloween's the twenty-seventh.
Okay. So.
I will get the draft out as quickly as possible.
I'll get you the words and, and, okay. So the whole, my, my thought process being that Anthony goes there, uh, on behalf of the board, will have the recommendation in hand. And we'll see what the council's temperature is and what the status of the MOU is with the Board of Ed. And if they're at a point in time where they're going to look for a new location, then we can ask to be involved in that process. But, you know, the threshold question is, is there going to be a search for a new location? Because I, I understand things are said at the council meetings, but, you know, when people reconsider and look at the legal options and whatnot, that may change. So it, it might be that it's not. Either way, if, if it's still going to be at that location, I still think the planning board should be involved. And we should express our concerns and try to make sure that, um, we're able to do whatever we can to make this transportation center fit within our master plan and, you know, be a logical choice if that's where it's going to be. So we're sort of powerless. And I just say that to everybody's benefit. We're, as Tom said, we're one of three boards who look at this and can't do anything other than issue a recommendation. But we will try to stay involved in the process in order to represent the interests of the residents.
I want to thank, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank the residents who have taken the time to come out and speak before this board, who have participated on Zoom, who have thrown comments into the abyss that is Facebook at some points. Um, you know, I, I think that a lot of us come to the table here with different backgrounds and different experiences. I'm from a very small farm town in upstate New York, where motivated citizens do make a difference. So I'm very encouraged to see representation and to see public comment and to give people the idea that the decisions that are being made affect real people with real consequences and to see your commitment as chair to being able to give voice to those folks and take some good action. Sometimes boards like this are able to help. And that is, that's a pretty great feeling. So thanks to those that have come out.
And I, I just want to make it clear that, um, I, I think this board does recognize that having the buses at the schools is not the ideal solution. I, I, it's disruptive. You know, we, we talk about fumes and stuff, you know, that's, our kids are being exposed to it. Whoever's working around these buses are being exposed to that. So it, it is, it is an issue. It has to be addressed. Uh, I just, I hope all three sides, you know, the, the council, the Board of Education and representation from the planning board, everyone can get together and think of the best location for this that, you know, doesn't, doesn't harm any, you know, the least amount of residents, because I know nobody's going to want this in their backyard. But, you know, try to do what we can to minimize the impact of it on near, nearby residents. And of course, the, the big issues, and no one can say it's not an issue, that the traffic issues on Borden Town, Ernston, Washington, it's, it's a mess. And my, you know, I think I said this at the, at the last hearing, you know, to have everything concentrated within a two-mile radius of one area of the town is just, it's, it's not fair to those residents. And I know the people in Laurel Park are all in that, you know, if you live in President Park, if you live in Woodside, if you live, and you're all impacted by this. You try to get onto Ernston, it's virtually impossible. It's a county road. And I know they tried to fix it. But it's, it's almost at a nuisance level that you can't, you can't get on the road. People are cutting, it's, it's horrible. So that's my view of this. So, you know, I don't know where it's going to go, but for what it's worth, I, I wanted to express that.
Mr. Chairman, and Tom as well, um, there, i- i- in our capacity as a board, we would often ask for conditions of approval. We would ask for, you know, prerequisite things to be done in order to uh, vote to approve an application. Now, this is capital review, as we know, which is handled differently. We don't get to approve or deny. What I'm wondering is, um, in our recommendation, can we be sure to mention that prior applications all go through an environmental study, a traffic study, that those things should be done for us to consider approval of a specific location?
Yeah, certainly intended to.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we say that on the record because I know traffic in the environment.
Tidying to master plan consistency is that a master plan wants to make sure that those types of issues are considered. How is the plan of that?
And, and I think, you know, the difference between this and your typical run-of-the-mill capital review project is, this is a much bigger scope. It's a, I think, a long-range facilities project for the, the Board of Education considers that, uh, or the Department of Education. And it, it would have been nice to have a traffics. I, you know, I know the Board of Ed can say, hey, we don't have to, you know, because we're not subject to jurisdiction, but it would have been nice to have the data and the analysis as to what the impact would be on the local roads of all the, the buses. And, and they know where the buses are going. They know where the routes are. They know where those buses are virtually at every point in time. You know, to see the roots of the eighty-five buses and what the impact would be on, on Borden Town and, and, and Cheesequake and and with our traffic studies for the, for the fact, for the warehouses. You know, I, I know certain things may not be required, but for purposes of us making a recommendation from a planning standpoint, it would have been really nice to have. And I think, and that's why I voted to, to recommend, uh, to support Mr. Spazato's motion, because I, I don't think there's been enough evidence or findings or a, as to me satisfying these criteria, even though technically that they may not be required to. But in order for us to satisfy our, our job with respect to planning, we need that in order to recommend that this is going to be the place for it. So that's, that's part of my reasoning on that. So I'd be, I, you know, I would support Anthony's, uh, notion that, Tom, you include that in the, in the recommendation. Any other questions, issues, discussions on this one? No? Okay. So, um, I think, do we have to open up for another public portion, right? Okay, so motion open for a public portion?
Open public.
Second? Hi? And, go ahead, sorry.
Anyone from the public that would like to speak that's online, please press star nine or raise your hand.
Ma'am?
Again, Evelyn Smith, one twenty-four Kendall Drive. Just a, a quick note. You said about, you know, finding, uh, other land. Jim Robinson, who I'm sure every single one of you know who he is. Okay? He's a real estate agent. He has had many positions in this town. And he has offered free of charge to help the Board of Education find another location. They have not even responded to his letters. They are just completely ignoring him and who in their right mind would, would turn down free help from somebody with those kind of qualifications? I mean, it makes no sense. I mean, that's like, you know, if, uh, um, you know, the, no, never mind. It just doesn't make any sense. You know, he, he's, he's, uh, he's qualified, definitely qualified. And like I said, he's offering to do it for free. And, you know, how many times you get free stuff these days?
Well, Evelyn, I, I, I appreciate that. It's, it's not an easy issue because from the way I understand it, the, the Board of Ed, you know, they had land that they wanted to build the transportation complex on. It wasn't going to cost them anything. They did a one-eighty when they heard all the concerns. So they're looking, they're not, and I guess in their mind, they're, they're not looking to buy more property if they have a prop- property available that they can use to do it. So they're looking to get property that the borough or re, you know, re, I don't know, Sierra, uh, for, for a swap. So that does limit where they can, with that criteria, that does limit. It's not like they can go out and we but they're going to spend money and buy an ideal spot because they're not going to do it. You know, if they, if they, we find an ideal spot or Jim does or somebody, there's going to be a cost for that land and who's going to bear that cost. And then the taxes are going to go up and people are going to complain about that. Everything that we do has a consequence in some way. And, and it's mostly not a positive, it's mostly a negative. So this is going to go someplace else.
The other, the other location had the exact same problem. They were putting it in a residential neighborhood.
That, that too. But, but I think the one, you know, there were wetlands by Journey Mill Road, they, there, there were issues. But for them to go and find the perfect ideal spot, that might be owned by a private landowner. And they're not going to want to foot the bill. They might say, Borough, you have to foot the bill. You didn't want it by, you know, sell over and you didn't want it here. you know, sell over and you don't want it here. And now we want to put it here, but we're not paying for it.
Yeah, somebody suggested on, on Route nine where the Lowe's used to be. But I understand that they are going to put a car dealership on there. But it would have been perfect. I mean, it's certainly big enough and it's got parking spaces galore and, you know. Yeah, well.
And I think that there's, there's people that can figure out ways to thread some of those needles to figure out land that may be inexpensive or at no cost. And I think if someone's going to sniff that out, Jim, Jim's a good place to start.
That's what I'm saying.
Certainly as a board, we're grateful that Jim is participating as much as he has in our, in our conversation.
Somebody's saying, oh, I need this done. Oh, okay. I'll do it for you for free. And you say, no. Who does that? I know who does that, obviously.
It's, it's, it's not an easy issue and someone's going to be affected and there's always going to be consequences. So we're all doing the best we can and we don't know what's going to happen with the application. We just issue a recommendation, but if it comes down to having to select another location, hopefully we'll be involved in the process and, you know, we can make it work.
At the council meeting, Mayor Kilpatrick was, you know, very adamant that a new location had to be found. I mean, and everyone in, you know, on the council agreed that, you know, we had to find a new location. How that, you know, bears out, I don't know, but I, I know, it's like nice to know that everybody's on our side, you know, that, you know. We can be on our side and, and still we can't.
I think all the parties involved are on Saverville's side. I mean, certainly the, the Board of Education. And then, like I said, I, there are some amazing teachers that work in our schools. My kid is
Oh, yeah.
fortunate to get to be a Saverville kid and we're grateful for that. So just what we want to do as a board is make sure that folks that are developing here take care of Saverville. That's our, our job is to make sure that they take care.
Teachers are great. The problem is at the head. Okay.
We will issue our recommendation and, and.
Okay.
We're glad to have some.
I just want to let you know that he is available and has offered. Okay.
Are there any other members of the public that want to be heard in the general comment section? Anyone online, Beth?
Hey, move to pose to the public.
Second? All in favor?
All in favor?
All right. Okay, so our next meeting is December sixth. Any applications, Jay?
Mr. Chairman, the mosque application on Ernston Road is tentatively scheduled. They're required to resubmit plans early November. So if they do in time, then that application will be heard.
And if they don't?
Then you have no other applications for that evening.
And the next meeting is in the new year or after December sixth?
It's being discussed, Mr. Chairman. You'll have a reorganization and then the two meetings in January, but there's a question about the reorg. So we'll discuss that further.
Okay. All right. So is there a motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Hi. Good evening. Thank you, everyone.